Welcome everyone. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present, and we do have one appointment today. May I have a motion for the appointment of Karen Cashman replacing Mimi Sanchez on the library board for an unexpired term to expire April 1st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Would Karen come up so that the community will know who you are? Thank you Karen. If you want to say a few words, you can.
Sure. It is my honor as a lifetime lover of the library and to bring that to the community and my children. It's just such an honoring moment. So I thank you and the community.
Thank you for serving. We appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations on your mom's appointment, guys. And our library board chair will say a few words. Ginger. No worries Ginger.
Ginger Crosby, Warren Avenue, which I recruit from consistently to fill positions. We've got two others on the board. And Karen will be a tremendous asset. And I also want to thank Mimi Sanchez, who gave years of dedication, not just on the board, but going around soliciting for gifts when we had our big auction with our concert, which we will have our concert again, but no auction this year. But it's a hardworking board, and we've got a lot going on at the library. So please, community of Tuckahoe, use your library. It is such an asset. For the size of the library and the size of the staff, we offer so much. Let me tell you, take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also just like to thank you Ginger for your service. You are very faithful to the library and we appreciate that. These are volunteer positions, and it's sometimes difficult to find people who are willing to give their time and their talents. So let's just show our appreciation when we do have volunteers who are willing to step up. Thank you Karen. We also have one presentation by the Eagle Scout. Eagle Scouts for a project proposal, Story Walk by Renee Orana. Please come forward now. Thank you Renee. The next slide.
Good evening. My name is Renee Ong Orana, and I am a Life Scout part of Troop 19 Tuckahoe, ever since its founding in January 1st of 2019, the day as soon as girls were allowed into the Boy Scouts of America program. I'm currently coming up onto my Eagle project, the final and most ultimate, and I'd say most renowned rank of the Scouts BSA program. And I come to you for your help and your aid. And if there are any questions during my presentation, please do not hesitate to ask. What is a Story Walk? A Story Walk is a program that was actually started by a woman named Anne Ferguson in Montpelier, Vermont in 2007. So clearly, as this has been a program that has been going on for around 15 years, we are certainly not the first to implement this program into our libraries. There are libraries such as Scarsdale and Brookfield, which is actually in Connecticut. Bronxville also has their own version of a Story Walk, and I have personally communicated with the librarians of each of these institutions to get inspiration and ideas for our Story Walk. The idea for a Story Walk includes displays and signs lined along a path. Each sign should include one or two pages, and walking along the path, usually a parent and a child, the idea is that you can read a short storybook from start to finish. Now, these are just some sample photos of different Story Walks, ones that are very similar to the ideas that we have. The one on the left contains a bunch of signs going along the path, which is generally what the Story Walk is. And the second has a more clear representation of an individual sign, and it more so exactly reflects the type of sign that we plan to purchase. Now, why? Why the library? So, the library, I'd argue, stands as a beacon of light in our community. I personally have been volunteering there for years now, and it's a precious source of knowledge and community and refuge that I believe should not be taken for granted, though I feel like especially in our most recent years, it has. Now, why a Story Walk specifically? Interactions with the library remain scarce due to the impact of our quarantine, and an outdoor product is a safe and sure way to get the community more involved. And this will lead and drive people towards the library and increase awareness along an area that was considered not so beautiful initially. Now, this uses our unoccupied space around the library in a more educational manner. How will we do this? How will this be carried out? The process itself is actually very simple. Pages will go into the display, will be laminated a few days prior, and displays themselves will be installed by volunteers. And in terms of volunteers, I do have friends that need volunteer hours, but also many girls in my troop who personally need the volunteer hours for their own personal rank advancement. And how do I plan to raise funds? I plan to discuss and, of course, inform members of my family, personal friends I have, and from the library's community itself, in order to solicit monetary donations. I have personally created posters discussing what my project is and how exactly to donate that will go up in the library tomorrow, actually, as soon as I can. And I will also include fundraisers such as the upcoming Tuckahoe Road Race. I have planned a bake sale in the morning. Please comment, it's a wonderful event. Our troop has volunteered there before. Now, this is my current timeline. First point, the Village Day in which we seek formal approval. Tomorrow, I plan to display the posters in order to get the community more involved and aware of this project itself. The 18th, this Sunday, is the Tuckahoe Road Race, in which we will have a bake sale. All funds will go towards the creation of this project. And throughout September, I plan on writing letters and donation lists in which I can spread the word more efficiently and formally to people who may not be in my personal radar, if I may phrase it that way. And I will be currently brainstorming and planning any future fundraisers if necessary. Now, projections for the project, the cost of the project. So my initial cost in order to start the spending itself, the displays cost around $1,600, but the project as a whole is estimated to be $2,100. And my plan to fundraise, in case things go ARI, is about $2,500, just to account for any mishaps that may occur, or any funds that were miscalculated during the many phone calls I made to a bunch of vendors about the materials themselves. And the project dates, we aim to have this project started in September, early October, pardon me. As I mentioned, page lamination will be done a few days before, and essentially, we will buy a lamination machine, laminate the pages of a storybook itself a few days prior to actually installing the signs, which will be five days later on the 10th of October. And the rain date would be the Saturday, October 15th. In order to donate, there are three ways you can donate. There is cash, check, and digitally. So cash, in order to make sure everything has a clean, tight trail, I will have the donators provide their name, a preferred form of contact, and their home address. Checks personally must be made out to my name with a memo of Eagle Scout project. And both cash and check can be dropped off at the library, which will be stored in a personal envelope meant for my project, to make sure everything goes to one place. Digitally, I will provide my personal phone number that is connected to an account that is dedicated solely to my Eagle Scout project through Zelle, and my phone number is on the board, 914-316-1339. Dates of donations will be monitored and tracked for every single method of doing so. I understand. Your time is very valuable, so I really do appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Any questions for Renee?
I was just wondering, I'm sorry if I missed it, when the timeframe is that the storyboards would go up?
So, our plan is to have the Story Walk up in early October. So the lamination of pages themselves would happen prior, just to expedite the process on the day of with volunteers. That would be on the 5th of October, and the signs themselves would be installed exactly along the parking lot side, which has been recently graded on the 10th of October.
And how long would that be up for?
This, we plan to have as a continuing project, and due to the nature of the signs, the pages themselves can be interchangeable, so multiple stories can go up throughout the year according to different themes, maybe every month or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How big are the pages?
The pages themselves will depend on the storybook, since according to copyright laws, we cannot photocopy any certain books. We will purchase two storybooks and personally rip apart the bindings in order to use the storybook itself. The signs themselves will be about 32 inches tall, 24 inches wide, and 18 inches for the main panel.
Okay.
We will provide credit to the creator of the Story Walk program, and a smaller writer that mentions her name in the program itself.
Any other questions? Anyone in the community have a question? Thank you so much Renee. We appreciate it. Oh, we do have our librarian.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, Renee, I'm like the children's librarian, and Renee has been a wonderful volunteer since I've been there, and she brought this to our attention. This is something we've been talking about, so it was really a great time. And we always have a wonderful community self.
Yeah. Thank you for how thoughtful you were with putting this together. You can have a seat. So I'd like to, before we move to the public hearing, can we go ahead and move to resolution number one, authorizing the use of the library grounds for the creation of a Story Walk by Renee Orana for her Eagle Scout project? May I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations Renee. We look forward to seeing this project. So we do have one public hearing today. Public hearing to afford all interested parties an opportunity to be heard concerning the renewal of a franchise renewal agreement with Cablevision. And I believe we do have somebody here who will present on this agreement. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Samantha Pardell-Harez. I'm a manager with Government Affairs at Altice, here in behalf of Cablevision of Southern Westchester, doing business as Altice or Optimum. I've been working with village attorney and village administrator to seek a renewal of a 10-year term for our cable franchise agreement.
Can we just have, can we just pause one moment while our family leaves? And if I could ask everyone to please, let's give her our attention. Okay, you can bring, come closer to the mic a little bit.
Better?
And Andrew, maybe we can close the door? Thank you. Okay. Yeah.
So I'm here seeking a 10-year term for renewal of our cable franchise agreement, and it's based on the existing agreement, which expired May 25th of 2022. And I'm here to answer any questions from the public or from the board.
Okay, so I guess we will go ahead and I'll ask for a motion to open the hearing. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so maybe we could talk a little bit about what the agreement is, so that people will know more about it and be able to ask more informed questions.
So, a cable franchise agreement is a contract between a municipality and a cable operator, in this instance, Altice or Optimum, to install and maintain wires, cables, fiber optics, and other equipment and structures within the public right-of-way of the municipality and dedicated utility easements. My company does not install or own any poles. Rather, we have an agreement to be a pole attacher. Compensation back to the village is in the form of a franchise fee, which is governed by federal law under the Communications Act passed by Congress, which is 5% of gross revenues collected from subscribers.
Okay. Gary, is there anything significant that we should highlight?
No. I think Samantha said it perfectly, and it's something that I guess we do every 10 years.
Right.
We have other cable providers also be coming in shortly, because I think their agreements are expiring.
Okay. Is anyone in the public would like to come forward and weigh in? Now is your opportunity. You may have a seat Samantha, if you'd like. Anybody? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom that has any? Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. So I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so I will move to resolution number four, authorizing the renewal of the agreement for, regarding the PEG grant funding to be determined and agreed upon by the village administrator and attorney, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you Samantha. Okay, and we do have, oh, the adoption of the minutes, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2022?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so we have, first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on anything on the agenda, you may do so now. Okay. So we...
Good evening. I'm Lovely Phillips, High Street, Tuckahoe. I am here, the classic Peter Pan said, a wonderful piece, "I got a crow." And that's how I'm feeling right now about what happened on the Main Street Park, Main Street and Marbledale Park, this weekend, where Tuckahoe sponsored. And I'm hoping, I just got here, so I hope I'm at the right time on the agenda, right?
Well, it is on the agenda, so yes.
It's okay now?
Yep, it's okay.
Again, "I got a crow." From my segment or part of this beautiful, wide community called Tuckahoe, and what we did in the Main Street Park area this Saturday was absolutely inspiring. And I want us to know and feel proud about that here in Tuckahoe. We had, sponsored by ECAP, and again, I just got here, so I don't know if ECAP presented themselves, an extravaganza, I would say, a sports extravaganza for the children and the youth of this community, and the residents in our community particularly, to come out and celebrate themselves and their talents and their physicality in sports. And I am a very proud grandmother of Max Hops Pierce Harlem Globetrotter, who sponsored this along with ECAP, and brought along a young man who is the 11th-rated dribbler in the world. His name is, it's gone, I'll get it back in a minute. But for this, you know how I feel about diversity here, and you know how I feel about the strength in it, and you know how I feel about what all of us have to contribute. And if this Saturday was not a proud moment for us here in Tuckahoe, especially from our area, from the residents in our area, I don't know what else could be. This is who we are as Tuckahoe. The park was full with little kids learning to roll the ball up their arms and trying to put it between their, under their knees, and jumping up and down and being sure they could slam dunk from half-court. It was just the joy in that moment. That's what we are about, Tuckahoe. That's what we are about Eastchester. That's what we are about New York State. That's what we are about the United States of America. Let's feel proud of that. I'm so proud of my community. And by the way, having said that, I want you to know as a board, because you know I'm all over, how many people come up and have congratulated just the physical presentation of Tuckahoe. Congratulations to the Beautification Committee, or whatever you call, with how you present yourselves. I mean, it's beautiful here in Tuckahoe. I talk to everybody, and they're talking about the flowers, the DPW, congratulations to you, and the Police Department, you know how I feel about you. I am just the voice for the pride of who we are in Tuckahoe. And congratulations to you, board, for what you're doing now. I feel so, when I hear people responding to the positivity, the things they say, you get things done. I'm proud of you. When I'm going back to this weekend, "I got a crow," because I mean, what happened at the Tuckahoe Park this Saturday was magnificent. Go Tuckahoe.
Thank you. So I guess that'll take us to resolution number two. Just to give everyone a little bit of background information, we received, I received an email from Son of Tuckahoe, Max Pierce, who's also a Harlem Globetrotter. And he said he wanted to partner with ECAP to have a back-to-school program, and he wanted to teach the kids how to dribble and dunk, and he was going to come and dunk, and he is like a world-renowned dunker. And so he and Backyard Sports, who've also been helping to sponsor a lot of our sports events in Tuckahoe, along with ECAP, came together and put together a Tuckahoe Hoops Festival over the weekend, and I attended, and several board members, and it really was pretty spectacular to see how these children were learning from a Harlem Globetrotter, and they paid such close attention, and they were so inspired, that I believe that he inspired them beyond sports. So thank you to Max, thank you to ECAP for consistently working to support the children in our community, and thank you to Backyard Sports, who helped to sponsor some of these programs. So, having said that, we will retroactively ask him for a motion to authorize the use of the Main Street Park for this Tuckahoe Hoops Festival.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and so we have a few events coming up. Third resolution, authorizing the use of the Lake Avenue parking lot on Sunday, October 1st, by Growlers, for an Oktoberfest celebration. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And resolution number four, authorizing the use of the village streets on Friday, October 7th, between 4:00 and 5:30 approximately, for the Tuckahoe High School Homecoming Parade, which I'm sure everybody is looking forward to. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And if you like basketball, Tuckahoe's the place to be. So, resolution number five, authorizing the use of Main Street Park. Just to pause there for a moment, our basketball court is sought after by all of Westchester. So it is a beautiful park, and I don't blame everyone for wanting to come and play there. So authorizing the use of Main Street Park on October 16th for the annual community fund, Bronxville Eastchester-Tuckahoe Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Sorry, who's second? Who's second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, yes, please, come up. Very exciting. Thank you for being here.
My name's Chris Bush. I grew up playing at that park, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the community fund at Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. And so we're, this is a year, you know, we threw, this is a tournament that we last had in 2019, and it served 120 youths from ages 6th grade to 9th grade. And I think this time around, what we'd like to do is add a few enhancements. In the past, it used to, there used to be a cost, it was $40 for teams to register. And this time around, we'd like to broaden the reach of our event such that it's free. And we've already gotten to that threshold, thankfully, via our local sponsors and local businesses who've stepped up to the plate to make sure that that can happen, and so maximizing inclusivity and increasing a fun event for all. We have, we have the police departments of all three villages that will be there to grill, barbecue, serve food for anyone in attendance. The aforementioned Max Pierce is also tonight to enhance and make our event a really special time for the residents who are, or sorry, the attendees who are in the tournament, for sure, hopefully can make a few dunks for everyone, but I think you can also, we're also having Lowell Robinson, who's a Tuckahoe resident of the past, and I think well-known to the community, he'll be there as well to provide sort of onsite coaching and mentorship to people that are playing. And so we're really excited for this event, and we thank your approval for our event on the 16th.
Thank you guys so much, not just for this, but for all you do in Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville. You guys are really awesome. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
A special thanks to Chris and Peggy, because they've really run with this, and we couldn't do it without them. What will end up happening with this tournament will...
Is that Peggy? Hi Peggy, come on.
She's one of our newest members of our board. Very excited. What we'll do with this tournament is, we right now have what's called a youth community fund, and so it's comprised of high school students from Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. It's one of the only organizations really in this area that combine all three kids, all three towns, they all work together, and it's a grant-making organization. So they'll fundraise, and then they accept grants. There's tons of service opportunities, and you've been so kind to give us a number of them. Thank you Kara. And then what they do is they review grants, and then they make the decision to give, where to give the money to. So what we're going to end up doing is, this will be their fundraising event each year. So they'll be raising money through local sponsorships, and then be able to use the money they raise to give right back into the community.
And I have gotten the youth community fund letters of achievements, and I want to continue to get those. I mean, how much they do, the young people, let alone the community fund, the adults. So thank you, thank you both for that.
Thank you Peggy. Can I say something really quick?
Sure.
I couldn't be more happy to join this group. And years ago, writing grants from the other side for our municipality, for the Police Department, and for this village, to be on the other side now of service with them, they give so much. The community fund, and many of the agencies here tonight can attest to that, many of you, of the programming that is available because of their money. So we thank you so much for total village support, which I knew that we would get, and being involved with the youth community fund. I just also want to say, since I'm here, and I will be involved with them, if you know teens in the Tuckahoe and Bronxville and Eastchester High School that want to apply to be part of this unbelievable group, it's something, go onto the website and you can read all about it. So I just want to throw that out there, because it's a wonderful resource for our kids and... resource for our kids and showing them what service really, really is. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I say something really quick?
Sure.
I'll be fast. I just want to say, the Youth Community Fund is so incredibly helpful. You have no idea, I give them, like, I ask for volunteers for all the events that we do. I give these young people a thing of supplies and say, here, make magic happen, and they make magic happen every single time. So I'm very grateful as an organizer of many events for you and your programs.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move back to our resolutions. Resolution Number Eight, authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the Village of Tuckahoe and Local 456 International Brotherhood of Teamsters, that's DPW. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And thank you for Deputy Mayor letting me know that I missed Number Six. More fun, authorizing the street closure of Marble Dale Road at Fisher and Jackson on Sunday, October 2nd, for a classic car show. This was a project that was brought to us by Raco, which has been done in years past, but because of COVID was stopped. So may I have a motion authorizing the street closure, so we can have the classic car show?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and Resolution Number Nine, may I have a motion authorizing New York State Education Grant in the amount of $120,000 for a humidity-controlled unit and furnace upgrades at the library to be matched by the village at 50%.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we'll move on to some tax certs. So we have authorizing a tax cert settlement with Anthony Scarsella for assessment year 2022 with street address of 204 Alpine Place in the amount of $3,172.27.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And also authorizing the tax cert settlement with Tuckahoe Developers of Poughkeepsie Shopping Center for Assessment Year 2022 at Eight Depot Square in the amount of $7,982.54.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we also have another tax cert settlement with Tuckahoe Developers of Poughkeepsie for Assessment Year 2022 in the amount of $1,811.86. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I just want to note that, if you notice, the tax cert amounts have been much less than they have been in years past, and that's because we are pretty much keeping up to date with them. In years past, I would be sitting on, at a board meeting, and we would be authorizing tax certs for, you know, 10 years, five years prior, and now we're actually in 2022. So thank you so much to our village administrator and team for keeping us up to date. We also have a, let me go to the, okay, so we do not have this on the agenda, this is an add-on, just so you're aware, Camille. We have a police vehicle, so we are, I'm asking for a motion to authorize the 2018 Dodge Charger as surplus for sale to the highest bidder.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And as we, I'm also asking for authorization, there were various budget modifications and transfers for fiscal year ending May 31st, 2022. May I have a motion to make those modifications?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we should pay the bills, so authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,164,822. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that brings us to departmental reports. Camille, do you have anything? Okay. Andrew, do you have a, the police report? So our Lieutenant Andrew Zerolnick, filling in for the chief.
Good evening.
Hi, Andrew.
So a few things from the Police Department end. First and foremost, we want to congratulate the kids going back to school, schools back in session. We want to be mindful of the school bus safety rules out there, making sure that everyone is stopping for the school buses, both directions, both the cars behind the school buses and oncoming traffic. It's very important to keep the children safe. Those who don't comply with that are state consequences, or up to a $400 fine and five points on your license. So we don't want to see anyone get that, but it is very important. So we want to keep those children safe on the roadway. Speed survey results from the summer have been posted on our Tuckahoe Village website. They will be under the News and Announcements section. So we have the results from the last couple of months, and we will continue to post our results in that section as the year progresses, for all the different studies we do. E-scooters. So we've been receiving a lot of calls and concerns from both parents and operators throughout the village, as it relates to our young people riding these scooters through town. So what we did was, we composed a comprehensive list of laws and important pieces that is also on our Tuckahoe Police Village website, which will be in the News and Announcements section. But a quick do's and don'ts, I just want to mention, that it is important that, that we highlight that you must be 16 to use these electric scooters, so 16 and over to operate them, and that these children must abide by all New York State bicycle and motor vehicle laws on the roadway. So that means stopping at stop signs, stopping at red lights, that they can't just go zipping through traffic, that they should be staying to the right side of the roadway, the right side of the shoulder, and not operating zigzagging on sidewalks. So these are just some of the more important ones. Single riders only, not doubles. We see multiple children on these pieces of equipment. It's dangerous. We're trying to keep everyone safe, but understand that they want to enjoy these fun toys. So it's important that our parents just educate our children, make sure that we're abiding by these laws, because we don't want to see anyone get hurt. And again, there is a more comprehensive list of all the laws listed in our Tuckahoe Police website under the News and Announcements. Reaccreditation, the Village Police Fund was reaccredited. It's a five-year process that just occurred. We went up to Albany, to the Capitol, Chief Costanzo, myself, Lieutenant Rota, and our accreditor manager, Detective Yankowski. This is a, as I said, a five-year process. It's a lot of work to do. It is a program that's comprised of 110 different standards, broken down into administrative, training, and operations. No stone goes unturned. Everything is, everything is seen and really dug through. So we're honored, we're humbled, we're happy to say that we met the state standard again, and it really verifies that our department is held to the highest of standards in police services in 2022. So it's something that we should be proud of.
Yeah, we are.
And I stand here to be.
We are proud.
Thank you. And on that note, I just want to again point out that Detective Emily Kasko, all her work, she is our program manager, and she works side-by-side with Chief Costanzo to get this all done. It is not always the most exciting piece of law enforcement. It is a tedious process that she keeps very coordinated. So a special thank you to her, of course. And lastly, just wanted to note, I know the Community Fund is here, they pointed out the Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament. We and the other police agencies, Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville will be together, partnering up with the Community Fund, who does a lot of work. We've had an ongoing relationship for many, many years. It's been great, and we look forward to this event coming up in the fall. So that is it from the Police Department.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrew?
I do have one, Lieutenant. So you mentioned the speed data would be posted. Will there be outcomes of that, speed data?
Yes, I think all the statistics are on there, as far as the last two to three streets that were done.
Yeah, and I guess I thought, you know, for instance, there was one meter on Parkview, and the question was, should we have a stop sign there? So that's what I mean by outcome. What will be done with the speed data?
Are we making any decisions based on that data?
Yeah, so that's something that the chief would review, and then if any of the civic associations come forward and do those requests, the chief would have the final say on it, based on
The data.
The data, of course. So I'm not sure of that specific one, but we should have a follow-up conversation to that, because the outcome is not on there.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you. And I just want to add that, you know, when the Police Department was being accredited, the Director of the Accreditation Agency does ask to meet with the mayor, and met with me, and said he's been, he was a chief of police for many different communities, progressive communities, conservative communities, and really said, our Police Department should be held up as the standard for policing, community policing, and what policing should look like. So I just want the community to know that we have a Police Department that has been held to the highest standard, and to Lieutenant's point, they, we're not afraid to look under the cover, under the hood, to see if there are things that we can improve on, and that's what makes for a great Police Department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our esteemed DPW Superintendent. Hi, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. I first and foremost want to congratulate and welcome Chris Mahoney. I wasn't at the July 11th meeting, and Chris Mahoney was appointed a labor, sanitation labor for the Department of Public Works on July 11th. So I want to welcome him personally. I want everybody to know that he's been a seasonal with us since 2018, and he'll be an asset, he has been an asset to the village since then, and I know moving forward, everybody will just absolutely love him. So I just wanted to welcome Chris Mahoney. Second, I just want to talk about the EV charging stations, the electric vehicle charging stations. We have so many of them throughout the village. We have them in parking lots, we have them on streets, and people are asking me, why aren't they working? This is two stages. We worked with NYSERTA to put these units in place, and I, the problem that we're having is that Con Edison was never prepared for the amount of work that these charging stations required, especially that Village of Tuckahoe has 40 of them. So we're waiting upon them. They are starting to come in and complete a lot of these projects. So I would say, within the next four to six weeks, we should be completed with them. Next, I want to talk about paving, some of the roads that we're going to be paving this year. I keep on getting requests for certain roads, but this is our final list. We're going to be paving Winslow Circle this year. We're going to be paving Oakland Avenue from Lincoln to Benedict. We're going to be paving Everett Street and Stebbins Avenue, probably in the middle or late October. I know the paving crew had just came in to, just come into Eastchester, be working our way to Bronxville and ourselves. Finally, we're very proud of our DPW Day. So we've decided that DPW Day, which is our open house day for all the residents to come, I'm doing this without my glasses, pretty amazing. But you'll be able to meet the DPW crew, give them a chance to showcase the many facets of the department that we do on a daily basis. We're going to have educational tables showcasing our green and sustainable equipment, machinery, power tools, and many of our projects. There'll be vendors there. We're going to have trolley rides. We're going to have the DJ there, magician, face painter, jumping castle for children, and much, much more. We had a great event last year. People are looking forward to attend at this year. Being hard of hearing, when I heard that the basketball event was October 16th, I thought he said October 15th. But October 15th
And you freaked out.
Was our DPW Day. And October 16th will be the basketball event. So that would be an exciting weekend at Main Street Park, and please all attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Any questions from the Board? I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. And we got, you know, the compliments that we got about how beautiful the village looks from Ms. Lovely, a lot of it is due to DPW. So thank you, Frank. Your team does a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Swadish, with the library report?
Good evening, Mayor and the trustees.
Can you bring the mic down a bit and speak into it? Thank you. Oh, you can't.
I just wanted to say thank you, everyone. Our first summer reading program to incorporate in-person programming since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, saw the return of many patrons who were delighted to have face-to-face content. We held an outdoor violin concert that drew 86 people, cooking programs up to maximum attendance. We did other programs, history, legal advice, crafting, and the finale was bingo, raffle prizes, and much, much more. For the summer reading for adults, we have 58 people participated. They read 199 books, and we offered 33 programs, and 468 people attended. And for children's, they have 56 programs, and attendance was 1,246. And for the children, thank you, and thanks to our librarian, Elaine, and Miriam. For children and pre-K reading, there were 52 kids sign up, and they read. So the program was, they have to read 20 minutes every night or more than 20. So the total minutes they read was 39,929 minutes, which is almost 665 hours. So which is very, very amazing that the kids, they are reading. And we have 10 teens who read 34 books, and this all possible to the friends of the library, and also thanks to the Community Fund. They offer all the money and sponsor these programs and refreshment, and thanks to all the volunteer and Tuckahoe Library staff to make this program possible, these programs possible. I just want to give you some of the upcoming programs. On October 4th, we are having a special story time in the park with Mayor Andino and Senator Myers, story that celebrates what we have in common and respect for our differences. And we started another program. It's called Understand Architect, which is for adults and teens. It's on Wednesday, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Our next program is going to be September 21st, and please check our calendars. We are offering two programs a month. And we have an online writing workshop with author Marge Pellegrino, and also Sustainable Food System, Save the Climate, which is going to be on Wednesday, September 21st, at, September 21st at 7:00 p.m. And then we also offer Zumba program every Monday night at 5:00, and also going to offer virtual cardio dance classes, Bollywood, and Hangra, which is going to be on Wednesday, September 28th at 7:00 p.m. Lot of graphic novel book club, adult book club, and online, our recurring programs are memoir writing, Tai Chi classes, meditation, art classes, and sound healing programs.
Thank you.
So please check our website. Any question, give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Village Administrator, do you have anything?
I didn't have anything specific off the bat, but with all this Main Street Park talk, I think it's important to note that, just like most of the community, I'm really excited for what's going on down there. It looks great. The new playground equipment is in. I know I've been, you know, trying to get the contractor, updates to the contractor. Mr. DeMarco has been, you know, trying to get updates from the contractor to move faster on this, because we do want to see this open prior to all these events. But hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll see kind of the completion of that project, and, you know, have a little grand opening down there or something. But it's really going to tie that park in well and get the tennis courts done. So hopefully, prior to all these.
Yeah, hopefully. Gary? Okay. So that will move us to what's on the agenda as miscellaneous, but it's not really. We have a date night movies in the park. So we got, we, you know, as you guys know, Cara Cronin has organized several movie nights at the park, and we, I got an email from one of the residents saying, hey, what about us adults? We like movies. So can we have a date night? And so, of course, I called Cara and said, hey, can you pull that off? And she was like, absolutely. So date night at the park will be on Friday, September 23rd, and the movie will be Marry Me. So if you would like to come with your honey to the park and watch Marry Me, it will be at sundown, which is around, what time? 7:00 now? 7:30?
6:30 is sundown. Tickets start at 7:00.
Okay. Main Street Park, yes.
And you don't have to have a date. You can
You could come with a, anyway. But Ginger does have one, anyway. And also, our next Village Board meeting will be on October 3rd of, at 7:00 p.m. So right here. So we'll move on to Board of Trustees reports. Can we start with Trustee Engelbert?
I'll try not to ramble on too much. Mayor Andino, okay. So first, I want to start with the library. And Swadish, I'm going to embarrass you personally here from the Board, but I want to And Swadish, I'm going to embarrass you personally here from the board, but I want to thank our village librarian for coming to the rescue at our last movie night with a hotspot when we had some technical problems.
Can you guys not hear trustee Engelbert? Is it, is it too low? Wade, I think Nicole's mic might need to go up.
Was that intentional? I certainly hope not. Okay. So Swadish came down and saved, and saved the day. And I have no doubt that she was probably cozied up with a cup of tea and reading a novel when I rang her. But she was there in, in a flash. And I must say, I am humbled regularly by her dedication to, to the village and to the people of the village. So Swadish, thank you for your, for your service. Now, as always, as our dear librarian just kind of went through the list, I mean, we have an amazing lineup of activities this fall. So I do strongly encourage you to check out, check out the website. But better yet, if you don't have a library card, why don't you come on down to the library and get yourself a library card? And you could see in person just how special our, our library is. I will ask you, your library needs you today. The Friends of the Tocco Public Library are, they're looking for new members. Both for their monthly planning meetings, but also for ongoing financial support, as well as a number of open board positions. Now, the Friends, they fund a lot of the great programs that we are all benefiting from. So, and those museum passes, which I regularly talk, talk about. So please, kind of get involved with the Friends and become a member so we can continue doing these wonderful, wonderful things. Okay, so the Tocco History Committee, I must tell you, the Tocco History Committee sends me a report every month and it's so amazing and wonderful. But they would like to thank, thank the Board of Trustees for our unanimous decision to support the Ward House having landmark status. They'd also like to offer their condolences to the family of Anna Carapella, who died on July 16th. At 101, what amazing, amazing life. They have also had an increase in inquiries via email and in-person visitors this summer from as far away as Missouri and California, as well as many local vistas. You can't underestimate how important these websites are. Nick Zanzana will be attending the Association of Public Historians of New York State Annual Conference in Kingston, September 19th to 21st. And I do believe David, that contingent on that funding is that Nick would come in and present to all of us on what he, what he learned. He and our wonderful children's librarian Elaine Provenzano will attend the Westchester Historical Roundtable on September 27th. Elaine accompanying the Eastchester Town historian Richard Forliano for presentation to the Tocco School District to introduce new teachers to the Tocco history and offer up the available resources of, of the committee. Lots of projects going on, presentations about Tocco before and after to the seniors. There's also work going on, on a historical walking tour publication. Definitely stay tuned on that one. The new development of a new website and the scan, continued scanning of documents into the archive. And if you want a number, 1,000 likes in August on the Facebook page. So Wednesdays from kind of 9, I want to make sure I'm getting on this page, 9:30 to 12 at Village Hall. If you want to get involved in historical community and contact information is available on the website. Last but not least is our wonderful community center, which is just, just so great. I stopped by a community center in a rural Pennsylvania town with some members here of the board earlier this summer. And boy, I may be very, very grateful for our community center and the careful, thoughtful stewardship of John Galucci of our community center. It really is a gem in our village and we have much to thank kind of for, for that. Now, the community center is going to be super busy this weekend, but I'm going to leave that to the good Dr. Howell to talk about in, in just a minute. But I will point out and write on your calendars, I'm sure everyone here has a dirty car in their, in the driveway. But Sunday, September 25th from 10 to 2, there will be a car wash. And our, the Tocco High School soccer team, if you pay them, they're going to wash your car in the community center parking lot. So, you know, let them do their job and, and that would be great. And I'd close with a special thanks to whom I consider almost the godmother of, of Tocco, but our state senator Shelley Mayer for her consistent support of the village, which included, if you didn't see the press release, grant money to renovate the restrooms at the community center. I mean, lots of jokes here for sure, but you know what? They look beautiful and their renovation is part of kind of staying on top of things in the village and taking good care of the resources that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. The zoning and planning boards usually take off the month of August, so they're reconvening now in this month of September. The zoning board meeting will be held September 14th at Village Hall at 7:30. That'll be in person and on Zoom. There'll be just two agenda items. One is on 86 Maple Avenue for a return presentation for an area variance for a deck. And on 94 Kensington Road, there's an area variance to convert a garage into an art studio. The planning board meeting will be held September 20th at 7:30 p.m. Is that still Zoom only?
That's still going to be Zoom only.
Okay. So two items on there. The 25 Main Street return of a previous site plan. And that has to do with that building that is, you know, part of where Growler's Brewery is. And another item on 125 Columbus Avenue, which is Transform Fitness. So kind of a quiet month for our zoning and planning boards. Folks have asked about a number of projects which seem to have stopped in the village and there's not much of an update. Just, just want everybody to know that, you know, the building that's on the corner of Main right there across from the River View is kind of stalled, as is the project on Limekill and the restaurant on Marble Dale. We are in constant contact with all of the heads of those projects, trying to help move them along as, as best as we can. As we, the lieutenant mentioned, schools are back in session. So Eastchester School started right after Labor Day. And the newly appointed Board of Education at its first meeting appointed a new school district superintendent, Ronald Valenti. So they will also be, as they're a new board, be holding coffees that are, that will be hosted by school level. They'll be held from 7 to 8 p.m. In the Eastchester High School Study Area, that's right near the cafeteria. On October 3rd, there'll be one actually focused on just the high school students. So for the students to meet with the Board of Education. On October 18th, it'll be for parents of high school students. October 20th, parents of Waverly students. November 7th, parents of middle school students. And November 21st, Greenville. And December 5th, Anhutch parents. So congratulations to the new school superintendent. And I encourage folks to go out to all of those meetings. The next Board of Education meeting for Eastchester will be on Tuesday, September 20th at 7:30 p.m. in the library. Yesterday on 9/11, the board attended the memorial that was held at the Eastchester Town Hall. And I wanted to remind everybody that we learned from the Eastchester Rotary Club that they'll be sponsoring a visit of the Fire Department of New York's 9/11 Never Forget Museum. That'll be at Lake Isle on September 28th and 29th from 1 to 4 p.m. On those two afternoons, that 1 to 4 p.m. time slot will be for the general public and students will be visiting in the morning hours. So I encourage everyone to go see that. It's, it's filled with testimony from individuals who actually lived through the experience. On county news, redistricting fund continues in New York, this time at the county level. As census data came back and showed that the county has grown and it, it looks like our county legislation district will be affected. So the county will be hosting sessions on the redistricting process throughout the month of September. So September 14th from 6 to 9 p.m. at the Board of Legislators' Chambers on 148 Martine Avenue in White Plains. On September 19th at 5:30 p.m. at Yonkers Library, which is right near us. And September 20th, 6 to 8 p.m. at Mount Vernon City Hall. So I encourage people to attend those meetings and understand the redistricting process. There was a construction career fair that was to be held by the county on September 23rd, but that has been canceled. I wanted to, to let people know though, that our U.S. Representative Jamal Bowman's office will be hosting a career fair at Yonkers Waterfront Library on September 24th from 1 to 4. So things are ramping up for the Tocco Challenge, which will be held this Sunday. So I, I hope everybody has signed up. But if you haven't signed up, there's still time. We're taking online signups till Friday at 6 p.m. There will be in-person signup on Saturday during bib pickup, which will be at the community center between 2 and 5 p.m. But the day of the race, there will be no registration. So you have to do it before. We've had a series of incredible raffles that we've done through the community. So we have one more raffle that will happen on, and I see, we have a fashion model here from last year's, wearing last year's shirt, Claire Gorman. And that, that raffle will be held on Thursday. So you have to sign up online to qualify for the Thursday raffle. And the prize that will be raffled off will be a couple of hoodies, which will be in the same design as the race shirt. That were given to us by Red Sun printers who, who help us with our shirts every year and do a great job. We've had, you know, we'll be honoring all of our sponsors at the race and after the race. I just wanted to mention two sponsors that, that are doing something for the race participants. One is Broken Bow is coming through again with an after-race party. If you bring your bib, you can get a free beer or a free non-alcoholic slushy when you present your race bib at the bar. And we also have a new sponsor, New York Presbyterian Westchester Medical Group is donating drawstring bags. So everybody can store their race day paraphernalia in those bags and we'll have a bag check for you. And they also are setting up a station where, with frames and props, so you can capture pictures as you let everybody know that you're going to take on the Tocco Challenge and post them on social media. So far, we have about 380 people signed up and I, you know, I'm sure that we will get to our 425, which was what we had last year. And we'll probably exceed that this year. So looking forward to that. I think it's going to be a great time. Weather is looking great. So I look forward to seeing everybody there this weekend and want to give a thank you to the police and DPW in advance because we couldn't do all of that without them. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor?
The Tocco Housing Authority's Tennis Association had their annual Family Day on August 20th. I was away this year on vacation, so I wasn't able to attend, but I was told that it was a success and a great time by all who attended. So thank you to the Housing Authority and Director Irina Metzviki, Metzvyski. The Tennis Association led by Chanel Moore. The maintenance staff, our Tocco PD, the DPW, and all the volunteers who helped make it happen. And the Tocco Housing Authority's next meeting is September 20th at Four Union at 7 p.m. The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, as Lieutenant Zerolnick noted, that the summer is over and school has begun. Which I'm sure makes many parents happy and some of the kids. But the ECAP after-school program began today. And ECAP Director Denise Chen said that the enrollment has been increasing, which is a good sign. With the ECAP staff and the tutors from the Caddo School, the program has been a great help to all of the kids who are enrolled. As was mentioned earlier, the Tocco Hoops was held Saturday in the Main Street Park. There were at least 30 kids that participated. And it was in collaboration with Max Pierce Backyard Sports and ECAP. I was able to attend that and witness the kids not only learning about basketball, but having fun and a great time at the same time. The Veterans Report. On September 2nd, the Veterans Appreciation Day was held at Ry Playland. All veterans and their families were invited. Senator Shelley Mayer's office is holding a Veterans Forum on October 8th at the White Plains Library for veterans and their families living or working in State Senate District 37, which includes Tocco, Eastchester, and Bronxville. And this is to address any state issues veterans are facing. All are welcome and RSVP is appreciated.
Where should they RSVP?
The Shelley Mayer's office and the White Plains Library. The Veterans VFW Post 2285 were in attendance Sunday morning, which was yesterday at the Town Hall for the 9/11 ceremony. It is hard to believe that it's already been 21 years since 9/11 happened. And to all of those who lost their lives that day, to all of the families and friends who lost loved ones. May we ever be reminded of the ultimate sacrifice that was paid on 9/11/2001. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cronin?
Hi everybody. I hope we're all transitioning well into the fall. I would like to parrot Lieutenant Zerolnick in asking people to be mindful about school buses. And I want to thank the Police Department for following some of the buses and making sure that the children are safe. It's really important that we stop at those stop signs and not go around the buses when they're stopped for picking up children. Moving on to the seniors. Oh, before I do that, I also would like to thank Detective Ashley Tocido for putting together Police National Night Out on August 2nd. She did an incredible job. It was hugely successful. There was everything there from drones and Narcan, Narcan training to bouncy castles and magicians. She, she did an excellent job really organizing this. And thank you again to the Community Fund Youth Program because they came and they helped and they did a great job. Going back to the seniors. The seniors are back in session after their summer hiatus and they're meeting in person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the, but you must be vaccinated and boosted. So please make sure that you have that if you would like to attend their events. The Annual Bazaar is back this year and will take place on October 15th. The seniors are looking for donations of items for sale, which might include jewelry or handbags or anything else they can put in the quote, white elephant game. If you have anything to donate, but you can't quite get there during the hours that they're open, you can always call me and I will happily come pick up anything that you have to donate and deliver it to them. Tomorrow, they are having their annual book exchange and members can bring a book or two for swapping. And that is that. The Beautification Committee will also start after their summer hiatus. But I want to just put in yet another plea for you all to take a look around, see the incredible work that the Beautification Committee does for our village. They really do keep this village beautiful. They keep it beautiful. And they work very hard to do so, along with our DPW who put in a lot of, a lot of human hours and, and do an incredible job. So if you have it in your ability, please go on to either their Facebook page or their Instagram page or go to the village website and follow the TBA link. And please consider making a donation. You can donate online now. They really do need your help and support because before the holidays come up, they put up the holiday wreaths. And all of this does definitely cost money. So please consider a donation to the Tocco Beautification Committee. The Tocco Environmental and Sustainability Committee was also on summer hiatus. They meet again later this month. And I will have more to report. I just want to address some questions that we've been, I've been hearing about Westchester Power, which is the ESCO that the village opted into back in, I think it was January of 2020. So there was, because energy got very expensive, there was a moment that the ESCO stopped supplying energy and we all went back to ConEd. But I think people have been getting letters in the mail saying that they've been opted back in. And so people are concerned, why have I been opted in without my permission? This is something that happened a couple of years ago and it's, it, you, nothing has changed. It's just that now that the ESCO can negotiate for rates, people are being put back into the system. So nothing has really changed. And that's why you might be getting a letter right now. Does that sound right? Okay. Okay. I want to thank, so we had three movies in the park this summer. I cannot possibly do this without the army of volunteers and the tons of donations that we get in order to make these movies in the park happen. I am extraordinarily grateful to all the hard work. I am extraordinarily grateful to all the hard work. I want to name a few people, because they consistently show up and make these things happen. So, Josh Gachion, Marilyn Graham, Stephanie Palmer, three Johns here, John Reichel, John Gunther, John Bor Ducci and Sonus Music Company, and then Beverly and Sam Christian, and then Swadesh, who came and saved the day for us, and Sarah Derisse, who also came out of, out of her home just to save the day for us last time. We are greatly appreciative, but we also have some young people who are always there and always show up and are always working, and I just want to say thank you to Justin Smith, Michaela Moore, Damari Dixon, Nick Engelbert, and my son Zan, who really do go above and beyond and try to, try to help out and pitch in. We are always looking for more volunteers, so if you are interested in volunteering, if you're an adult or a young person, we can put you to work, especially as we have hopefully another creepy candy crawl coming up in October, and that's, it's going to be big. It's big. So, I, please, yeah, please reach out to me if you're interested in volunteering. I can easily put you to work in whatever capacity that makes you the most comfortable. And I think that's it.
Thank you. And I believe, maybe it's next month, Trustee Cronin, that you might be doing the Youth Service Awards?
Yes.
Maybe next month.
I think that's it.
So, come back, so that we could honor the youth who consistently give back to their community. So, I just want to let you guys know of a few things. First, in October, we will hold, I've been getting a few emails and phone calls, messages from residents who are looking for their booster shots, and so we will be holding a vaccine, maybe two in October. I'm not sure of the exact dates yet, working that out with John Galuzzi at the library, I'm sorry, at the community center, so that we can offer some evenings, maybe on the week, during the week, and then on the, on the weekend, to try to accommodate those people who can't make it in the evenings or can't make it on, during the, the weekend. So, we're going to be offering the shingles, COVID shots, COVID boosters, and he said possibly the monkeypox, but that's not for sure. So, stay tuned for that. We will put out some information on our Facebook page. We'll probably send out an email blast. If you do, if you're not on our email list, please go on the website, and you can just opt in to get our emails. Also, the village administrator and Trustee Cronin and I met with the engineers regarding our traffic light infrastructure, and we've been, you know, we've heard for years how frustrated people are. Although it's a first-world problem, it is a quality-of-life issue, and I always say that that's also important, and so we are looking at what are the possible options to resolve the issue with the traffic lights, especially particularly on Main Street. So, we're working on that. They're going to do another traffic study, because I think the other one is an old one, David, if I'm not correct. Tell me.
Absolutely.
Or they're going to evaluate it again?
They're going to relook at some of it, but they're not going to do different traffic counts, because the traffic counts they already have are pre-COVID, and they're probably more extensive, or it's at a higher level of what they would be right now, so they're not going to redo that, but they are going to kind of...
Okay. I thought I heard Mike say that possibly, but okay, if they're not, if they don't need to, that's fine.
No, because we would prefer them to use the pre-COVID counts, because they are higher, right? So, you know, at, you know, eventually...
Than now. Right. Okay. Okay. So, just to let people know that we are working on that, and we are waiting for them to give us some possible proposals for options. One of the things that we're looking at is how do we address the entire village and all of our, the entire system in a way that's going to be environmentally responsible? And that might be an opportunity for us to get federal funding, so that we can address it in a, in a bigger way, as opposed to just piecemealing. So, stay tuned for that as well. I also want to thank Senator Shelley Mayer, we did a press conference with her, for granting us $245,000 for the upgrades to the bathrooms in the library, the community center, as well as for helping us to upgrade our tennis courts. So, as our village administrator stated, if you have not passed by the Main Street Park yet, the, the new playground looks gorgeous. We're hoping it is finished soon, as well as the tennis courts, that we can have a ribbon cutting there and have some events before the weather gets too cold. So, that's it for me. If there's anyone, trying to make sure, yep, that's it for me. If there's anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda items, Mr. Pinto.
Good evening.
Oh. Hello, sir.
Good evening. I just wanted to ask you a simple question. Has the Fire Department been notified of the road closure for Marble Dell Road for the car show and for when the students march up the street?
I'm not sure. Now, do you know, David? We have not?
If, if they haven't, could they be, Dave?
Yeah, everything, everything would happen after official approval, so after tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Vito Pinto. I'm a lifelong resident of Tuckahoe, except for now, I just moved to Eastchester. Born and raised on Washington Street. I was one of the Washington Street Dead End Gang, and happy to say that all of our athleticism was at the Main Street Playground. I also served on the board when we renovated and put the basketball courts in and the tennis courts. So, I have a history that goes of serving this village some many years. It was brought to my attention, when we talk about recognizing people in this community and the diversity of our community, we all were brought up on Washington Street to be inclusive and not to be exclusive, and our dads and our residents there taught us that. We talk about a tradition, and we had a statement at Tuckahoe High School, we talk about, and we use it when we talk to students, as veterans, and tradition must not be abandoned. Best strengths should not be forgotten. They must be rekindled and utilized to strengthen the present for the future. The present is our young people, the future are they. And we, who have served our country, deserve better treatment than what I learned about regarding the banners. I came in, I spoke to Kara, I spoke to David today, and I said that as far as my 27 years in office, there's an open meetings law, Section 102, about having a meeting that's duly noted. I understand it was duly noted for your workshop on last Wednesday, at which the discussion was, you invited Michelle Brish, the Girl Scout troop leader, who was in charge of the banner program. And it was our understanding as veterans that once the, the issue went away, that the banners would be taken down for the Beautification Committee. We know all the members of the Beautification Committee, and the veterans agreed. We talked to Frank, and it was our belief that they would be put up once the flowers, you know, came down and be put up in time for Veterans Day, taken down and then put up sometime before Memorial Day, and the flowers got re-hung. At that meeting, I asked David if anybody was present, and he said nobody from the Beautification Committee was present, and Kara confirmed that and said it was no, no bit of theirs that the decision was made. Now, by the open meetings law, if you discussed any issue and you made a decision, it has to come to the public. I referred to the councilman and the county, the council, and I brought with me my copy that I've had during my 27 years of service to this community. Section 102, any meeting with a quorum at which you discuss, and even if you refer and make issue, it's a decision, whether you take a consensus or not. And to, to destroy the high hopes of people who have been role models to our young people, and I can assure you, as growing up, as I did in Washington Street, the Morris Brothers, Henry Norman, Joe Yancy, all of them, and then as my brother got older and went into Korea, it was Cliff Lee Young, who came up from Florida. Mother married a young man, and Ruby was his half-sister, and we've, we recognized him on our Memorial Day, along with Ernest Hill. When you say that we're a diverse community and we treat everybody alike, I disagree with you when you say we're not going to hang the banners again. We had full agreement, and if Frank, I don't want to put him on the spot, was your emissary when we talked about hanging banners, taking them down, and putting new ones up. I was told by trustee Darrell Taylor at our Veterans Committee meeting regarding a parade next year, oh, we discussed as a board to take the banners down, and if there's a parade, to give them to the people who put them up and have them carry them in the parade. I think we made it very clear to Darrell that was not going to happen. People are not going to carry the banners. They serve a better purpose hanging on the posts, and if the lampposts where the plants go, then there are other poles to hang them on. And I was told by Con Ed, as long as we didn't hang them on wherever there was a transformer, we were okay with that. There are a lot of telephone poles in Tuckahoe, ladies and gentlemen, that I've been through all my life here. And while we credit Max, and I credit Max too, and I credit all the other young people, athletes who get together to treat our young people and teach them, I think we do a disservice by taking those banners down and not rehanging them. I was told that it's a done deal. You violate the open meetings law by having a meeting, not making it public, and only inviting Michelle to make her case, and it was confirmed today that that person was there, and she made her case, and you decided, whether it was by consensus or not, I can't tell. I don't know. I wasn't there. I haven't seen it. I was expecting it to be on the meeting today, to make the formal decision in front of the public and give we people who believe in our veterans. And I'm going to read a couple of things and just say, when I talked about tradition shall not be abandoned, that's exactly one of the traditions we have in this village, making sure that traditions get followed through on, whether it be black or white, whether it be rich or poor, whether it be educated or uneducated, we have a tradition of working with each other. 9/11, 21st year yesterday, I was saddened, my cousin, a firefighter in Eastchester, was, his name was added. I, I know too many people. We lost six people here in Tuckahoe. My opponent, Michael McHugh. We have a post office named after one of our esteemed veterans firefighters, who was a fire marshal, had no business going in the building, has the post office named after him, thanks to Senator Nida, to Congresswoman Nida Lowey. I'm going to ask you to understand my brief talking points, and thank you for this opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Pinto.
There rose all those men and women who signed on the dotted line with their blood, even at the cost of their life, to defend our country from evil. World War I, the Doughboys went. One of them was J.C. Jeffress, for whom the post on Marble, on, on the street Midland Place is named after, okay? That's the World War I guys who came home, the war that was to end all wars. The Greatest Generation, how many of our banners are with people from all different walks of life? And I got involved in that, and I don't sit here to talk about myself, but they had no idea what was going on, and they came forward, and they recognized their Morris family, like the Five Sullivan Brothers, who served. The one Tuskegee Airmen, Edward Woodward, who came and spoke here and is in our History Channel and was on Mike County Information. We have everybody from all walks of life that served. They were my role models when I grew up. The World War II guys, my dad, who attended Shiloh Baptist regularly, when they said to the, one of the ministers, oh, Black Mike, well, he's not black, it's Black Mike Pinto, the Commissioner of Public Works. When we talk about getting together, that's what 9/11 did. It brought our nation together, and I'm saddened to see us be pulled apart over one issue, which I think is workable and that we had an agreement with. Yes, the Beautification Committee wanted to put their flowers up. They're beautiful. We have many friends on there, and they agreed, but they never heard about anything taking them down. Their agreement was, they heard, that we'll do this, after the flowers come down, we'll put the banners up for the Veterans Day era, take them down, put them up a little bit before Memorial Day, and the flowers go up, and we have no problem with that. That's not done in any other city or village or town in this state or in neighboring states. They're up year-round, and they make room. And I, I just am so saddened to hear that. When we talk about the Korean veterans, Cliff Lee Young, what a hero he was, stood back while he evacuated the injured, and he fought by himself, and said 300 enemy were killed as he went from foxhole to foxhole. That's Ruby's brother, half-brother. He was our role model, riding around on the bicycle, wheeling around all the kids, everybody loved him. Black and white, we look forward to him. My brother Donato, the Smith Brothers, who all went into Korea together, the guys who had stark eyes when they came home, and they sat there in cold, bitter weather, fighting an evil enemy when China came in, and we're going to ignore their history? I was, I'm devastated. Vietnam, proud veteran, I signed up. I didn't run away. I knew my life was in jeopardy. When my plane got hit, I felt somebody was with me to get me back home, and we were treated like hell when we got back, excuse the word, when we got back. And it's finally time that we go and talk to kids, and they ask us questions. What's it like? How was it? And everything else, and they listen to us. We go to the schools, the three schools for Pearl Harbor Day. We talk about, you know, Cornelia Forte, the first woman, and she transported planes from Tennessee, who tended Sarah Lawrence. We talk about one of the sailors whose carrier is being named after him, and Doris Miller, he took up the, the machine gun to fight off the enemy, was killed later on. We talk about Operation Iraqi Freedom and Enduring Freedom, Iraq and Afghanistan. So many of our young men and women coming home with no arm, no legs, some of them right here in our own community. We support them. We're grateful for all the support they get. And when we talk about others, I don't know what more can be done. When we talk about 9/11, what went through the firefighters' minds, the police, when I went down there on the county boards with the county executive, we were told, get out of here with no masks, but we sent our troops down there too, to relieve them. We had Mr. Foley, Carrie Benedict's husband, who got, died from the remnants, who was looking for his brother. That's what 9/11 was about. It's commemoration of an evil doing by a heinous group of people. And we got together, and I'm asking this board, you haven't voted officially, because you didn't bring it to the public, and I'll ask you, Mr., if you can, that's, if you could look at the 102 section, and I have it with me, and I'm shocked when I took it out of my closet and read it, that you met and made a decision or a consensus not to rehang the banners. And I asked people here if they would say the same thing about their relatives, or over here, if they would say the same thing about their relatives. I'm glad I'm a product of Tuckahoe. I'm glad I'm a product of Washington Street. I'm glad I'm a product of the Main Street Playground. And I know there is people up there who have different beliefs than I right now. I ask you to give us the opportunity to come down with more people and those who are affected by this decision, and I believe it's not legal until it comes from a working, a workshop to the public for review and have an opportunity to, to say something. And I don't mean to put Frank on the spot, but Frank was extremely helpful to make sure that we got those banners up and then take them down, and we was on, he was, I believe, under the same opinion as I am, and other veterans, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pinto.
I took a lot of time.
It's perfectly fine.
But I am very, very passionate.
Yep.
When it comes to the veterans and our community, which is very diverse, I want to see it stay that way.
Okay. So, I'd like to just address Mr. Pinto's point and take us back to the original intent that was brought before this board by the Girl Scouts, was for the Hometown Heroes Banner Program to be, and to your point, an all-inclusive program. So, it was not a veterans banner program, it was a hometown heroes program. So, that meant that anyone in the community could nominate someone that they... someone that they viewed as their hero. And it could be a veteran. It could be a local store clerk that put their lives on the line during COVID. It could be a nurse or a doctor. It can be a department in the village that throughout COVID kept the village moving. So I think that there was some misconception that the banner program was simply, let me finish, that the banner program was for veterans. And I will say this, I really did not want to have this public conversation about how our community behaved during this program. So we had the troop in Tuckahoe come before the board, and the board unanimously was 100%. We support anything that our Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts bring forward. You've seen, we approve it. We got, there was so much division regarding this program and the inclusion of people who were not veterans, that I was really appalled by the behavior of some residents. And Mr. Pinto, I can use an example that our deputy mayor thanked you for supporting the Girl Scouts, thanked you at a public meeting, and in return, she got you coming down here without having heard what she said, to scold her for whatever comments you heard. I was sitting there, Mr. Pinto, I was there and I heard it. You scolded her for whatever comments someone called you and said that she made. So it got to the point where this program that was intended with a spirit of unity turned into something that was divisive.
Yeah, now it's not true.
You sure can. What's not true? Wait, which part is not true?
The part that I was coming down here to scold her. And that's not true at all. I broke up a group of people out here who were having some discussions, dissent. I had spoken to Kara earlier, and I said, "Leave well enough, B. Please tell the board not to bring up the issue, because I've got it finally settled down. If you bring it up, it's going to only bring up more volatile comments," and that's what I was upset about.
Right. But you did, but you do acknowledge that it brought up, you do, excuse me one second, you do acknowledge that it created division, because people were upset that anyone other than a veteran could not be acknowledged as a hero. So namely...
My opinion was, when I talked to Michelle, the comments were made by some people on the library board and everybody else, that during this time of COVID, there were people who did so much out of their way. They went out of their way to help the students, the residents, to come to the library, to get things done in the village hall. And that was done by the Girl Scouts, different than what all the other residents in other towns had, which was just veterans. And I even asked you, and you told me, you had said, "I don't want my picture up there. I told them to take it down." And what did I say about the mayor part, Mrs. Mayor? I said about the mayor part, she should not be recognized for being the first female, because there were two females running. One of them was going to be the first female. I said, "What you should be recognized for," for which I took some heat, and then it finally subsided, was that you did a tremendous job with COVID, like so many other people in this community did. It had nothing to do with veterans. It had nothing to do with real community heroes, other than because of the COVID. And that was my decision. I did not want to continue that discussion publicly. And I never got the chance to talk to Renee beforehand. But I did talk to Kara and say, "Please do not bring it up, because then it will only bring up more..."
Right. So I think you're actually making my point for me, that it created division that didn't need to be created by residents in this community. And one of the things that came up repeatedly during our knocking on doors and talking to people is, can we work on minimizing the division that started in this community? I was informed today that even you said, if Gina Lee had run, would she put her face up on a banner? I didn't put my face up on a banner. There was a nine-year-old Girl Scout who came to her mother and said, "I want to honor the mayor." My response to her, because I already know how some people feel about me, simply because of my political affiliation or the way I look, that they are against me for no good reason. And I was adamant that I didn't want to create further division. But this child's mother came to me and said, "Why would you take away my daughter's dream of honoring you? She looks up to you, and you have given her a dream to be able to serve in public office." That's the reason it came forward.
upset anybody. I just wanted it stopped. I'm sorry about it.
Okay. So, Mr. Pinto, so I just wanted to respond, because when you came forward, you came forward as if this were a veteran program that this board did not support. And I want to also state, and I want you to acknowledge, that this board has always supported the veterans. There is no program that you have had that we have not said yes to. There is no amount of money.
...
So let me finish, because again, the banner program that came before us was from the Girl Scouts, and you and the veterans, if you wanted this program, you could have come to us. But instead, you went to everyone in the community and attempted to get people riled up, and that is not unifying a community. You went to the church, you went to other residents, and asked them to reach out to us, when you could have just called me. You and I have had a wonderful relationship. I've had a wonderful relationship with Bob Foster. I've defended Anthony Laurie. When letters and stuff were put out, I called Anthony Laurie. So I have extended myself to the veterans at all times. And anything that the veterans have needed, I have always said, "Board, we should do that." Always. So to come before the board and to say that we are not supporting the veterans, I take great offense to, especially since my father was a veteran. So the thing to do, the honorable thing to do would be for the veterans to say, "You know what? We need to go and talk to the board." You never did that. I wonder why. You spoke to everyone but me, Mr. Pinto.
...
You did not speak to me. And you have access to me, and you're a pillar of this community. So I would hope that we could leave this meeting, still be friends, still be supporters of each other, and come together and have a discussion about this. Thank you. Thank you. But we just needed a conversation, Mr. Pinto. Okay. Anyone else have anything to bring to the board? Okay.
Came running down here tonight in my slippers, got up from the table to see Chris Bush, a kid who was here with, I taught him in high school. Claire and I saw him. We got to go run down and see him. Anyway, but while I was here...
Can we please not speak while someone is at the mic?
Yep, 24 Bronx Street. While I was here, I once again heard this discussion. I just, I'm a member of the community, and I just can't think, and I doubt if there's anyone in Tuckahoe who waved to more of those banners than my wife, Claire Gorman. Oh, he died here. He died here. She got out alive. At least four of those banners, and all the pictures that are still up in Tuckahoe Station Cafe, relatives of Claire. So nobody loved the banners more than Claire. And yet, I know I speak for her and myself, when we say, "If this is something that divides our community, we are 100% opposed to getting back involved in this, because we don't seem to be able to do this in a way that doesn't divide us." So Claire will just have to wave to her relatives at home. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Foster?
Good evening. I'm Bob Foster, Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars in Eastchester. I'm not a Tuckahoe resident. I'm not a Eastchester resident. But I spend all my life here, in Eastchester and Tuckahoe, and I love this village tremendously. I just want to say, you should recognize the people that worked during COVID. It's a great thing to do, but it shouldn't be done with veterans. You know, we spent a lot of time doing things that we didn't want to do. And when we came home, especially the Vietnam veterans, we were shunned. And things have changed since 9/11, and so many guys volunteered and have gone over and lost their lives, lost their limbs. And we said to them, "It'll never happen again to another veteran." And we supported them. And we made sure they got all the help that they needed from the VA. But I got to tell you, when you're out there and you have your hat on and your shirt on, and somebody comes up to you and says, "Thank you for your service," it means a lot. It really does. It opens up your heart, and you just want to say, "You're so very welcome. What we did, we did for you." Those banners, if they have a veteran on them, are a permanent "thank you for your service." And I think they should be up. I don't want to take it anywhere from anybody that worked for COVID. That's fine. But that's over with. COVID's done. I've had it three times. So I know what it's like, and I want to thank everybody that worked with it and helped people that had it. And that's great, but it's done. It's over. We're still doing it. We're still fighting. Guys are still dying. They're still coming home with parts missing. They're committing suicide, 20 a day, because of what they went through. I myself have had times where I didn't know what I was going to do. And if I didn't have the help and those "thank you for your service" every once in a while, I may have been one of those. So please, think about it. Put those men back up where they belong, because it's a permanent "thank you for your service." Thank you for listening, and good night.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
I am...
And please, everyone, just remember, we have three minutes per person. Sorry. Three minutes.
I'm a little emotional right now, but I'm going to just try calmly to say that I'm very disappointed in what has happened at the end of this meeting today, that something that is so precious to all of us, I don't believe that anyone in this room does not love this country, love their fellow man, and love this community. I'm not even able to understand why we have gotten to this point tonight, here, after everything else that was so wholesome has happened, we've come to this. We, if you go out into the hallway here and you look at the men who served, three of them are black. Nobody has to come here and tell us about what we've done as a nation and how different segments or elements of what of the population have served. This is not good Tuckahoe. If we use our morality and our dignity and our love of country in a very specious way to divide us, it's not healthy. Mike Pinto, Mike Pinto Senior was the essence of who we are as Americans, as human beings, beings, and people of this community. You never had to think of him in the divisive way that was just presented. I think it's self-serving to the individual, but I think it is detrimental to us as human beings and as members of this community. We've got to stop it. I see it rolling, coming down the way. Let's stick together. Don't let anything like this happen at the end. I'm not taking away what anybody feels that happens. It is almost ludicrous to me that anyone would believe that we in this community don't honor the veterans. I mean, it's just, it's just almost, it's ludicrous. We do. We love each other, and we honor every segment of every piece of anything that has made us who we are. I beg you, don't let this, do this to us tonight. Go home, think positive thoughts. Think about yourself. Think about your family. Think about your children, and think about your nation, and think about your dignity. This is outrageous. I reject it at every point. I think it's self-serving, and I don't let anyone self-serving deprive us of our unity and our dignity. We are Tuckahoe. We are Eastchester. We are Westchester. We are New York State, and we are the Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Yes, Sal?
Sal Provenzano, Levin River Street, Tuckahoe. Just a question about the walk signs on Lake Avenue, Main Street, and Columbus and Main Street. I know that they've been out, what, for a couple of weeks now? Is there any plan to get them fixed?
Do we have any updates, David?
Yeah, they have been out a couple of weeks now. It is kind of a frustration of ours. They did get hit when cable vision was running a wire there. We did some exploratory work. It's a lot more complicated than we envisioned to get it fixed, where new actually conduit needs to be run. If you saw them, they were actually out there late last week doing markouts, because it is a complicated mess underneath that roadway of different gas pipes and electrical lines and things like that. So all that's marked out, there is a plan in place to rerun that conduit and then rerun that light. So yes, I know it's frustrating. I know it's out, but we're trying to move as fast as we can on getting those back up.
The only thing, I mean, I don't care about the convenience of it, but, you know, living on River Street and going to that corner, it is dangerous. It is extremely dangerous, especially on the east side of Columbus Avenue. People have a red light there. They think that it's red on the other side, that people have the green and the arrow. And I've seen people, even when the lights are working, running out there and almost getting hit. And when you're down now on Lake Street and Main, it's, I mean, you take your life in your hands. I'm worried about somebody with a stroller. I'm worried about kids and, you know, older people that they can't move quickly. So I don't know whether or not we reduce the speed limit, you know, to 15 miles an hour until they fix it. But when those people fly over that bridge, they think that they're at the Indy 500, and somebody's going to get hurt.
All right. We'll definitely look into that. Thank you.
Thanks.
And while we're on that note of the speed limit, there are discussions at this, we're going to be having discussions at this board level regarding reducing the speed, the village speed limit to 25. It's an option that the state is giving to local municipalities, and I know it was on the agenda of the Bronxville Board and the mayor there, and I spoke about collaborating, deciding if we want to both do it. So that's going to be coming before the board in October. Anyone else like to address the board?
Elaine Provenzano, Levin River Street, Tuckahoe, New York. I would just like to make a comment about the Hometown Heroes. I bought one of the banners. My father is a World War II vet, and I think I just wanted to mention this because of supporting a project tonight for one of our scouts. And this was a scout project. This came from the hearts of these children and their view of hometown heroes, like you were saying. And the library was considered a hometown hero, and our educators and our first responders and the police department. And I think for, to look, to put our own view of what their project is, is a disservice. It was a very inclusive project and really heartfelt. And I think that Josh had spoken about this at a previous meeting. So I hope that we could really look at things with a little more of a child's heart and eye. So, thank you.
And I'd also like to add that when we spoke to the troop leader, she also stated that she wanted to find a project that could really help physically, like tangibly, help the veterans in a tangible way, in that she realized this program was really her doing. She, you know, she ordered the banners. DPW had to help put them up, but the girls really didn't have so much of a hand in it, and... in it. And we talked about bringing forward a project that will honor the veterans in a real way, in a way that they can help them personally. And to know who all the veterans are in the village and to figure out a way that would be a meaningful way to help them. So that's a good point that you make there. Okay.
Let me just say this. And I'm gonna try to say this as quickly as I possibly can, because my mind is going crazy over hometown heroes. I'm the treasurer of the Bronx River Sound Shore Audubon Society. We represent 11 communities in Westchester, okay? Mount Vernon, Bronxville, Eastchester, Tucoh, Scarsdale, all the way over to the Sound Shore, okay? We've got Larchmont, Mamaroneck. All right. We got a lot of money in our till, and we're dying to give it away to some community that is willing to put in native plant gardens. But here's, here's the, these are the things you gotta check off. You have to have a, you have to have a group of people that are gonna be there for years and years and years, so that we don't just give you thousands of dollars to put in native plants, which we'll buy, but somebody has to prove to us, this is me and Claire, because Claire's the membership chair and the newsletter, you have to prove to us that a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, there's gonna be somebody weeding and watering so that our thousands of dollars is not lost. So in 12 years of doing this, 12 years, we've put in three gardens. Three. We have put in the one between Young, Tucahoe, between Young and Marble Dale by the Quarry Park. That's one. It was done with a hometown hero, Frank DiMarco, who said, "DPW will help you. We'll put in a watering system." And Claire, who, with Barbara Neimerman and a woman here now, Pam, who go there and they weed and they weed for hours and hours, and it's going on for over a decade. That's one. Another one in Scarsdale with some incredibly wonderful women that have actually taken this on, but it's only three years. We'll see if they're really serious. And, and we gave a lot of money to the library to put in, to start, right? Elaine, the Audubon, Audubon seeded that with about $7,000 or $8,000 to put in the native plants. But again, we had to have promises from the library people that they would keep this going. That's it. Nothing from Mount Vernon, Mamaroneck, Scars, nothing from Nuer Shell. That's it. So you want my some hometown heroes? We'll put up Claire's picture up there. One of, 10 years she's keeping that garden going for this community. 10 years. Frank DiMarco would never have happened without DPW. So Girl Scouts, if we're really talking hometown heroes, we gotta really put our mind on this. I got some great ideas for people that keep Tucahoe amazing. Those are hometown heroes.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board? And if not...
Yeah, I need to say one thing.
Okay, we have board members who would like to speak. So trustee Taylor.
Okay, so in reference to Vito, what you said earlier, the statement that I made at the meeting, I did say that if the banners didn't go back up, they could be given back to the families. I did not say that they could be, the family members couldn't march. That was somebody else's idea to have them marching a parade. The second thing is, the commander, Bob Foster, got up and said, "Do not put up any other banners to honor anybody else but the veterans." So the problem is, you, the veterans are, I understand that you are mostly attached to, because you are veterans and everything that comes with that. But you still are taking something, an idea that came from the Girl Scouts, that to honor hometown heroes, not just veterans, and you're saying that if they, anybody else gets honored, it's wrong. It's wrong to take over something that somebody else's idea, somebody else came up with and say, "Only do it this way, or it's no good." It's wrong. I don't care how you look at it, it's wrong. Now, Michelle's not here tonight, so I'm not going to get into all the things, but people called this woman, harassed this woman, okay? Put her through hell over something that was supposed to be something for good, and they took their personal feelings, got in it, and turned it into something ugly. And that's how we are here right now. That's why we are where we at right now.
Shame on them because there's a woman making time out of her own life. She has a sick father. She's raising a family. She's helping these young girls out. So those people who are not here and called her up that won't show their face, shame on them.
Exactly. And that's the point. That is the problem with what is happening.
And that's, that's one of the reasons that Michelle Brish spoke to me personally and said that she's taking care of her family, her family member who is sick. She's only got six cadets in her troop right now, and to take this on solely was gonna be a big lift for her. So I'm not putting it on Michelle, but there were some things that contributed to her saying, "I also need to step away." She, people called the National Girl Scouts of America and reported her. How do you report the Girl Scouts? So these things actually happened. And so how do I, as the mayor, stand behind a program that just caused division in the community? And that because people were being honored, that some thought should not be honored, wreaked havoc, wreaked havoc on the community. And I watched village trustees who were helping Michelle with this project, pulling their hair out to try to smooth it over. Anyone else on the board wanna say a final few words? Okay, so deputy mayor's gonna speak. I'm gonna ask that you guys, please sit down. The deputy mayor is going to speak. Please sit down. Deputy mayor's gonna say something now. It's okay.
I would like to give us some food for thought on this issue. So I think everybody here knows, my 18-year-old daughter, my only daughter, just finished basic training in the Army. Right after she accepted her appointment to West Point, the war broke out in the Ukraine, and I thought, "Oh, my." I think as a mother, you know, I can't tell you the bizarre mixture of pride and fear that I have. And, you know, I think back to my grandfather and my great uncle, who I was very close to, both were in World War II. Both were captured in German prisoner-of-war camps. My grandfather carried shrapnel in his leg for the rest of his life. So what he always told us, you know, he never belonged to a VFW. He never was in a parade. But he sat us down and he told us that he would never even go to Europe, with my grandmother, who wanted to go to Europe. She waited until he passed away, because he said he would never go. He said he saw the worst of humanity in a war. And he made us promise that we would grow up and do everything we could to prevent a war from happening. So I would like us to think about ways that we could really honor those individuals who fought in wars, who have enlisted, you know, who have had all different kinds of experiences, because war, the nature of war has changed, you know? And Mr. Foster brought up a great point, you know? We don't have a lot of veterans, you know, besides Josh, who have come from service recently. And we know they're out there. I approached the two of you a couple of years ago on the Red, White, and Blue Program, which is really focused on community health for veterans. So we have that kind of a program that I really wish we could do something, again, back to the tangible piece of it. You know, there are, the Story Corps program that trustee Cronin has started, that, I think, you know, again, along some of the lines that we've seen with Memorial Day, to be able to capture people's stories and have them available for the younger generations to understand. To me, that is a tangible thing that we can do to honor the veterans and the sacrifice that they make. I think there might be better things than banners that we could do. So just some food for thought. Thank you.
Anyone, Mr. Foster? You can come after.
Don't misunderstand. I think everybody that's done things should be honored. That's, that's, that's not a problem. I didn't have any problem honoring people, but not with the veterans. It's a different thing. It's totally different. You wanna honor people, that's fine, but do something different. You know, the banners really have a lot of meaning, and it's around the country. And hometown heroes is specifically for veterans, period. That's how it is around the country. The Girl Scouts had another idea, that's fine. That's good, okay? But still, the veterans should still be honored.
Right.
And they still should go up. I'm sorry, that's it. And I did say at that time, I don't believe other people should be up with the veterans. That's not saying don't honor them, but they should not be up with the veterans. You got people on there that died. You got people on there that received Medal of Honor, that killed himself to save people. I mean, he saved six lives. Imagine what happened to those six lives after he saved them. They came home, they had children, they had grandchildren. They would've never had if it wasn't for him. There's nothing like that. You can't even compare the Medal of Honor to anything. I'm even ashamed to have my banner up with his. I don't belong next to him. He belongs with a giant banner. Just believe me, it means so much to veterans, and they've given so much to the country. They've given so much for all of us. Thank you.
After, after her?
This has to be madam history again. I think we need to go back to, a few of us are here now, that when the Memorial Day Parade started at Eastchester Town Hall, came down Route 22, and then down Main Street, downhill into Tucahoe with the veterans, Mike Pinto's father was there. I have the photos of that, and I remember what pride we would have when they came, the VFW from Tucahoe on Midland came through, and we were communities together. Something has poisoned the well here. That's what's bothering me so much. Those were the days. So now, all of a sudden, I'd never understood why we cut out that parade that would start at Eastchester and end at Depot Square. And there was a togetherness in us as people. All of a sudden, now we're segmented. Everybody separated out, and now we're at this, I can't even imagine that we have to have this discussion now. But go back, I don't know how many people are still here who remember that. And the people would bring their lawn chairs outside to clap as the people, and when here, and Vito keeps bringing up Washington Street, okay, when they got near Washington Street and the VFW veterans from the posts there came out strutting, and the whole community would just erupt in joy. Let's try to think about that, folks. Cut this stuff out. The division is not good for us. It's only a good thing in elementary school mathematics.
Mrs. Phillips, you're gonna get surprised, because we're working on that for this year. We're working on that. So what do you exactly say?
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanna introduce myself. My name is Luis Marquez, and I live in Eastchester. And I'm a proud veteran. Served for 28 years, Iraq, Afghanistan. There are more of us. And the reason people are gonna see that is because my banner is posted in Eastchester right by the school. My kids go to school there. I have a 16-year-old and a 12-year-old. They go there. They're so proud of their dad. But it's not only that. There are other veterans that now see that and say, "Hey, Luis, how did you get up there?" And I found that there's more veterans. You said Josh was one? Yes, there's more of us. Because they see that, they relate and say, "Listen, I wanna join you guys. I wanna go onboard. I wanna get onboard." There's Korean War veterans that are still alive. We still have Tony around. We have Vietnam veterans still around. But there are more of us. And the more visible that we are, those banners are very important. I think they should go up. I think, and whatever differences the community has, I think our veterans should be, should back up. Eastchester has us up there. Other towns you go through there, they have them, the hometown heroes, their veterans are featured up there. Whatever differences there are, I think our veterans should be up.
And I'd also like to mention that the banners were up for seven months. They weren't up for one month, or two months, or three months. We put the banners were up for seven months, and our DPW thinks our superintendent left, but got a lot of slack from people calling, making demands about where the banners should go. "I want my banner on the corner of." "I want my banner in front of the..." Am I, am I kidding? Am I telling the truth, David? So, so that's what I'm talking about. The intent of the program was very honorable. What happened in this community was not. And some of the behaviors of the veterans, I hate to say it, was not. And so that's, that's, that's the sticking point. But that doesn't mean that the members who are here right now should've come and spoken with us and said, "You know, we hear that this is not happening. Can we talk this through? Let's figure out how this can work." Because now we don't have a, a Girl Scout troop that is gonna do it. She says, "I can't do it. I can't pull this off." So now there has to be someone else that steps in that says, "I want to run this program so that we can have a discussion about how it's gonna work." So anything else from this board? I see you hitting the button. Go ahead.
I'll be, I promise to be kind of quick.
Sure.
Quick, quick on this. And first off, I think some of the veterans know, my, my father enlisted during, during Vietnam, and my grandfather fought in the Pacific Theater. And my grandmother told me that. He was never quite the same person, I know, after, after that. So veterans run deep and long in my, in my family, but also the Girl Scouts do. I was a Girl Scout. I consider myself still to be a Girl Scout. Didn't get all the badges, kind of that's, that's for sure. But when I heard about this program as a private citizen, it was exactly as Elaine presented it. It made me think of Mr. Rogers saying to look for the helpers in a time of crisis. And when you look for the helpers, it'll provide kind of comfort. And at the time, this was wonderful. It was inspiring. It was girls kind of building leadership skills and us celebrating Tucahoe at a very difficult time in our, in our history. As a private citizen, I was distressed by what I had heard about the conflict and divisiveness going on. We've got a lot of stuff already that we're quite divisive on, but to be divisive about Girl Scouts, I just not, could not wrap my head around. And in some ways, it was part of my decision to ultimately become kind of a trustee or run to become trustee, and thank you, Tucahoe, for, for, for electing me. But what I heard on every door we knocked on and kind of every call and meeting I have with residents is they want this divisiveness and conflict and outrage to end. We wanna start thinking about movies in the park and the accomplishments of our veterans and the work of our librarian. We don't wanna be screaming at board meetings or not waving to our neighbors and all that comes, comes with it. And ultimately, that's why I, kind of the daughter of a veteran, said, "No, I think we should take a break on, on the banners this year." So what I ask the community, what I implore the community and our incredibly committed veterans is that we need to come together and find a new path. Banners are great, but there are other things that we can do and come together and think through about how to honor the history and service of our veterans. And there are other ways and things we can do to honor and preserve the history of members of our community and the things that they do for Tucahoe. There's got to be a way out of this, so we aren't divisive, that we are the Tucahoe, that we can and should be.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Good night, Tucahoe. Good night, Tuckahoe.